I'd like to call to order the town council meeting of August 2, 2022. The time is 7:00, and we are in the Harvey Hearing Room. This meeting is also on Zoom. The phone number is (301) 715-8592. And the ID is number sign or pound sign, (874) 873-85588. Again, we'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call vote, please. A roll call.
Council Honan?
Here.
Council Basillo?
Here.
Council Munson? Council Belcham?
Here.
Council DeMarco? Council Flockhart?
Here.
Council Aiello?
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Here.
President Wittery?
Here. I would ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice President Ruggiero.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had minutes circulated from the July 19 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Consul Belch, second by Consul Belch. And yeah, Consul Flockhart. Any discussion, additions, deletions, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're going to take out of order, drive a motion to approve, to take out of order general information, and we'll go to public hearings.
Motion.
Motion by Consul Flockhart, second by Consul Belch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. So we will skip over the Charter Review Committee. We are waiting for the chair to arrive. We will go into the public hearings. We have numerous public hearings this evening. The first one I will open is on parking prohibited upon certain streets. The streets of Terrace Ave on the north side from the intersection of Harborview to the intersection of Shirley. Crystal Cove Ave on the north side from the intersection of Hillside to the intersection of Park. And Crystal Cove on both sides from the intersection of Shirley to the intersection of Hillside. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on these issues? Yes, just state your name and address. Yes.
Could I provide?
Absolutely.
My name is Viking Gustafson. I'm the owner of 94 Terrace Avenue. I have a little map here. On the map of that is supporters and today's public hearing. So as I understand it, and as you've stated, you're looking to prohibit all parking on the north side of Terrace between Harborview and Shirley Street. And I'd like to, and I believe.
Just a correction, Shirley Ave.
Shirley Ave, right.
Not Shirley Street.
I'm short one.
That's okay, I have two. I have two.
I have yours.
Okay.
I got one, thank you.
And actually, while you're speaking, do we have information we could put up? Do we have a location?
Mike does have it.
Mike might have it. So we might be able to, Mike, if you can hear, we're looking to see if you could put up information on this area, a map?
Yes, sir. Give me one second.
Yep, sure.
Hold that map up.
And then you could continue.
Okay. And so I do have some supporters from my neighborhood. And I believe that there, as I emailed to the last meeting, there is, shall we say, a pressure point, a pinch point. But the solution, I do not believe, is to prohibit parking on the north side because we've given up 100, over 108 feet of parking, and I believe provided 35 feet of parking. And it, and the pinch point, can I come over? It's over there.
The pinch point's right here, right?
Correct.
Between these two driveways.
Well.
Yes.
If there was, there's only a pinch point between those drivers if somebody parks them. So what I'm suggesting is that there's no parking between those driveways, as there had not been for years because there had been a hydrant there. And as they redid the street, the hydrant disappeared. And I can see how people can consider that area a parking area. There's nothing that suggests there's not, except, you know, 100 years of parking on the other side. So only one time have I ever known that to occur where there was parking on both sides, but it can occur because otherwise the entire street is gone. So, you know, there is, you know, if that area of 35 feet is no parking, that pinch point doesn't exist anymore. And we've gained 108 feet of parking, and that does not include the little addendum of the McGovern's section beyond my wall. I don't believe that we've had problems except for that one time. It's tight. It's also a cow path from, our houses were built in 1884.
60 or so years ago, on once, on the left side, the north side of the street, there was a sidewalk. And Dimes, when he was selectman, it was, it was a terrible street to get down by anybody, with anybody, with any parking. Dimes took the sidewalk.
If you could just say your name and address for the record, please.
McGovern, right next door. McGovern on Terrace Ave.
104 Terrace Ave.
You can continue, I'm sorry.
So Dimes had the sidewalk taken away, blacktopped it, sloped it, and it's a driving path up to the point where Viking was talking about, to the 90 Terrace Ave. So the only, the only issue had been, the only issue in the last 50 years has been no issue, ever since Dimes corrected the problem. Two years ago, when we had the street redone, there was a parking meter between those two driveways.
A parking, a hydrant.
Sorry, a hydrant.
Do you want a meter on the street?
So nobody parked there. It was never an issue. The hydrant got moved for, I don't know really what, the hydrant got moved down to the end of the street, which is fine. And a couple of years ago, I called the town hall, the parking guy, said, would you please put a no parking here, no parking sign? And this is how this evolved, I guess, from two years ago to add a simple no parking sign to this.
Or paint a stripe?
Or something.
You know, or something, but 35 to over 108 on a street, you know, we've got, I'm a two-family, the 90's a two-family, the 95's a two-family, and at best we have two parking places anyway if the public doesn't take them. It's not, I consider it kind of a street to nowhere because there's no reason to go there unless you live there. With some good exceptions, 4th of July, any beach party, and if something was flooding, you might come over there. You're going to have more traffic with the different ways you're rerouting things, and we accept that, and we certainly want room for a fire truck to go through, but giving up what is generally six places to get back to where somebody's going to park in the middle of it anyway is, it's very detrimental to our neighborhood. The things that I put on also up there that, what is, another thing that really is problematic there is when you come up Terrace from Shirley Avenue, just as you start to cut the hill in half and come down our section, you can't see there. You know, you come up the hill and people go fast, and I caught myself doing it too. You kind of go up the hill with a little bit of power on, you hit the crest, you can't see what's over that crest. So speed there is a big problem.
That's right, in this spot.
That's right. You just, you just come over the hill and suddenly you're on people. So speed there is a problem, the one-way sign at the bottom, you can't kind of see. And I think you're dealing with my suggestion number three, which is making the whole thing one-way. We support one-way, we support no obstructions in the road, we do not support giving up over 108 feet of parking to gain 35.
Thank you.
I'm living only three houses on the street that have no driveways or no garages. We're always three houses.
There are three houses that don't have personal areas, and there's no way to do it. You know, it's not happening, it's not a matter of paving over something. If there was a problem, I mean, you can't move the wall, we park against the wall. We'd all rather park and be able to get out of our cars without banging our doors, but it's not possible. We'd like to park on the other street, but there is no parking. And if there is a fire truck or something like that, you're better off to be trying to go up on the curb on the other side. You can't get over, you know, beyond the wall. So if you just trade the cars to the other side, you're up against a blank.
So just for address purposes, you're suggesting no parking between what address and what address?
Between 85 and 83 is really one building.
83 and 85, those two houses.
It actually.
It is a one building, but it's two addresses.
It's two addresses.
Right here.
It's one stretch of.
It's that stretch right there.
That would resolve the whole street's problems?
Yes.
That little part.
Yes.
In terms of that pinch point, I don't know what else. I mean, the dead end is another world.
Yep, that's another thing. Thank you very much.
John, John's, it worked for 55 years, so it only is not, it only became not workable when they moved the hydrant.
Right.
So keep it simple.
Thank you. Consul Ruggiero, Vice President Ruggiero?
No, thank you, Council President. I was going to say, so Mike is on the line, and he's the one showing this visual here. Mike, if you wouldn't mind just explaining to us some of the background of what TSAC was talking about, just so we can kind of figure out how we got to this point.
Yes, sir. So this came to TSAC again, I believe, was for Mr. McGovern, requesting, originally requesting no parking on that certain narrow section of Terrace Ave, I believe it was right around here. We looked at that, and as we usually do when we start looking at parking issue on a street, we don't just look at that 60 or so feet of the street, we look at the entirety of the street. We held a public hearing in August of 2021, somewhere between 215 and 300. Postcards went out notifying the owners of that meeting based on the assessed list. We held a public hearing, we took it back to the committee, and the number of issues came up when we were trying to go to the committee. First, as you can see, at its widest point, the street is 16 feet 6 inches wide with a 4 foot 6 inch berm. I will refer to Dr. Callow, if you want to know if it's a sidewalk or a berm. The basic gist is you can drive on a berm, you can't drive on a sidewalk. So at best, you're talking about 21 feet of street width. The town has ordinance that you can't park at any minute, it doesn't leave a 10-foot wide lane of travel. TSAC also adopted a policy in April of 2021, based on current best practices, so that when we look at these things and make recommendations, our recommendations will be based on the 10-foot traveling and the interest in the 8-foot wide parking level. The average vehicle is between, you know, is roughly 6 feet in width, some of them were seven, you know, with a large of vehicles on roads today. So we felt that, given this roadway, and also at the time, we were operating on the assumption that it was a one-way street, that was only realized during the, it was ordinance discussion, that it is not currently a one-way street. Based on all the information there, it was also, we made a little side swipes while we were sitting in the TSAC committee. We felt that this is the best recommendation in the interest of safety and compliance with our ordinance, because if you have vehicles parked on both sides of that roadway, the fire department felt that it was a, it was a potential hazard trying to get apparatus through there. We felt that it was a potential issue having the logical free trucks that are on every street in town these days getting through there, when you have cars parked on both sides of that street. And when we asked the fire department a question as to which side they prefer the parking to be allowed on, they recommended allowing side, parking the south side, which is the sidewalk, because they can always drive the truck off on the berm, they can't drive the truck off on the sidewalk because of tollie poles and whatnot. We realized that it is going to be, anything you need to best to the neighborhood to lose this parking, but it was the best recommendation we can make, both in the interest of safety and in the interest of being compliant with our ordinance, because again, if you have two cars parked on either side of that street, that you're talking, this car parked on both sides, that's going to be between 12 and 14 feet.
Reporting in progress.
Between 12 and 14 feet of roadway taken away, that leaves you 7 to 8 feet to get a vehicle down that roadway. And so that's why TSAC made that decision.
Okay, back to public comment. Just somebody before that didn't speak yet, was there somebody who hadn't spoke? Okay.
First of all, two years ago, postcards did not get to everybody very soon. I don't know of anybody who got the actual postcard saying there's a meeting. But be that as it may, if you go down where this, where the Shirley Ave part of this, which is the downward slope, it's 16 foot 6. Today, 17 foot 4 today at the widest part. That's what the trucks are using and the fire trucks use, that's where there's a fire hydrant, actually. So this endeavor to get it up to 20 feet and not drive on the berm is pointless. It's been working for 50 years, it's been fine. The only time is when people park in front of these two houses, because they can now, because the hydrant's not there, it's difficult for anybody to get by, even a car.
Yes.
We are not suggesting that two cars park beside themselves. There's one section of one side and one section of another. So in no way can two cars park and make that reasonable. That's not reasonable, we don't suggest that. We just switch sides, you know, as it starts to widen out. And this does not talk about the berm. The berm is sometimes nothing, sometimes it's four inches. I've had a name a breaker arm because it's black like, I paint mine so that you don't trip, you know, it's a kind of a meaningless piece. So that is not represented here, the berm.
Thank you. Any other comment on this public hearing? And again, we'll go through the public hearings, and we're going to go back to old business later, and then we'll discuss them in more detail and either approve them, disapprove them, or go back to committee for more information.
Can you say anymore on this public hearing?
On this particular public?
The street?
This street, right. There's five public hearings.
There's also the two streets that you, so Cottage, Crystal Cove Ave and Crystal Cove Ave. So if anyone would like to comment on Crystal Cove Ave, that's right now too, right?
So that's.
Well, no, this is, well, on, yeah, the three streets, right.
Exactly, yeah.
Crystal Cove on the north side between Hillside and Park, yes. Yes.
I'm Marvin English, I live at 15 Crystal Cove. To echo their point, it's been working for 50 something years. I, to lose the parking in front of our home when we have no parking as it is, there are multiple, you know, three families on Park, which we're on a corner, Park and Crystal Cove. We have two crosswalks that were put in when they put the sidewalks in, so we lost two spots there. So it's a one, you know, it's a one-car driveway, every home has at least two cars. I just, I'm not really understanding where it came from. I too didn't get a notice, so why now has this come up?
Mike, if you're still on, could you put that up, the Crystal Cove?
The section between Park and Hillside?
Yes, please.
You got it.
Are you talking about that section, or are you talking about the area from Shirley to Hillside?
Okay.
Yeah, Park to Shirley, like that corner.
Mike, my recollection on that part was to eliminate the two-way and keep parking. Did I, did I remember that? So there, there are two issues. There's this issue between Hillside and Park, which was to eliminate the parking on the north side right in front of that house, because it, again, to have two-way traffic with parking on both sides, you're looking at a 36-foot wide roadway based on the policy TSAC adopted and, you know, the best practices. This is 24 feet 4 inches, so we're allowed parking on one side. The Crystal Cove between Shirley and Hillside, I can pull that up real quick. This is, this, so this came up, actually, this came up during discussion at the other hearing on Crystal Cove. There was a discussion about this, because we had situations where people were backing up on the Shirley Street, you know, two cars can't pass each other with the parked vehicles there. Before this hearing, again, all of these, well, both of these items had, you know, hearings held and notices were sent out to the stakeholders, and again, it may not go to the resident, it goes to whoever's listed as the property owner in the assessed database. That's where the card goes. So, so basically, in order to have two-way traffic on this, you know, with no parking, you help it at 20 feet. The 19 feet 5 inches, we felt was close enough to allow the two-way traffic. We went by this section of the roadway every night, there were, sorry, I went by this section of this roadway every night for, prior to the hearing, there would happen more than three cars parked there. Every house on this section of the roadway has had a driveway.
That's incorrect.
We, based on what we saw on the satellite map, every house, all three houses on this section of the roadway have a driveway, the one on the corner has a driveway, or on the corner on the park has that. The, again, so there was a lot of discussion about this, and the fire department also had to concern, if I remember correctly, because of the redevelopment going in where the hotel was, that's where the sprinkler connection is, so that's where they're going to have to get to in the event of any slip-overs in that location. The option that was left for TSAC was to recommend eliminating parking or making it a one-way street. We had people that spoke up at the public hearing that said that keeping it a two-way street would be the preferred way to go with this, eliminating the parking spaces and, you know, having those three cars park in the driveways or elsewhere. And that's the conditions TSAC went ahead and made, because again, that street is not wide enough at 19 feet 5 inches to accommodate two-way traffic and parking, because you have situations where people are backing out into a major roadway.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
So when you made the reference, I believe his name was Michael, that many people preferred it to be this way, I'm just curious about, back there, how many people were asked and how many people preferred it?
I didn't say many, I said there were people who spoke up at the hearing. There were, I don't believe there were more than 23 people who spoke up at this hearing, and we didn't receive any correspondence to the contrary based on the mail-in memo.
Okay, so there's no majority that favored this or not, that that's not.
And just to be clear, this isn't just Mike making these decisions, this is the TSAC committee discussing it, getting input from the public, making a recommendation, going to our subcommittee, coming back with a recommendation, and then ultimately where we are now. So it's not Mike's fault that.
I just, I think a one-way street coming up from Shirley Street would be, make more sense.
Mr. President, just if I may.
Chief.
If everyone's done, public has done, coming up from Shirley, making this a one-way, having Beacon coming down in the opposite direction as a one-way makes for people who made the wrong turn a very circular effort. They can go right down Park to Beacon again and right back out. The people that lived there go right up, right down to Beacon and right out to Shirley Street as well. So it's a very viable option for the council if they wish. Not too many one-ways facing the same direction. Circulating in, we have traffic flow circulating in the appropriate way.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
My name is Billy Clark, I'm in 9 Crystal Cove, I'm the middle house there of the three. I think the biggest thing, my wife talks about when we talk, and obviously it would be a giant inconvenience for us if we couldn't have parking spots, wouldn't be able to have friends over, you know, all that. That's not the biggest thing we talked about, it was more about kind of the safety issue, especially with the park right there. Already cars go too fast, I got two little kids and, or there's older kids that they're always playing with, they're constantly running around that intersection there, and I'm yelling at cars that they're going by too fast. I'm that, I'm that dad in the neighborhood, you know? But I think if you remove the cars there, that's one of the only things that makes you kind of, you're a little cautious, is because you're not going to see if someone's going to dart out from a car. All of a sudden, that turns into a wide-open lane that gives people more, you know.
Speak with them.
Yeah, exactly, the dragway of just racing up there to try to get crossover to the other side and get there as quick as they can. So that's the other half of it. We wanted to raise our kids here, be able, you know, be here for our life and have the kids be able to go to the park whenever they want, as soon as they're old enough to be able to cross the street, cross off there is perfect, but, you know, that's just a giant thing we talked about. So obviously inconvenience, I could talk about that as well, I could talk about it all day long, because it is upsetting and inconvenient, but I think the safety factor is definitely something to think about. And we said the one-way street just seems like a solution where you could go up, and we talked about, oh, it could be inconvenient for someone up on the, up on the hill on the tower. It wouldn't be inconvenient because if you're coming down the tower, you just stay on Hillside and turn left right there. There's really no reason that they would have to turn left to go down, to make that left right there.
The bottom half, excuse me, I'm sorry. And the bottom half of Hillside should be a one-way going down past the park where it isn't now. It's a two-way. And when cars come up that hill from the park, there's no stop sign there, and it's a blind corner. I've seen near accidents there many times. I don't know how many accidents have actually happened there, but I think for the crazy intersection that it is, we've been lucky over the past 50 years.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this, the public, DPW Director Callow?
Yeah, I just want to add real, I sit on TSAC, I'm a member as well, and this is the conversation that we've been looking to have. It's good to have, you know, you know, both perspectives. At the end of the day, TSAC is going to make recommendations based on safety, and that's what we did. And the road doesn't accommodate two-way traffic and parking, and I agree, nor does that bottom part of Hillside. So the town's going to have to start making decisions not based on convenience, and this is how we've always done it, but based on, on, on safety. So the decision on these narrow roads is going to be to either eliminate parking or to change into a one-way road with parking. Otherwise, you just, you might as well not have a TSAC, because that's always going to be our recommendation on these narrow roads that have two-way traffic and parking.
Yes, Mr. Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as safety is concerned. Jacked-out precinct 3, thank you. I think as many cars can park on the street where those two cars are, are a good buffer against cars coming up the street. One way is a good deal, if you make a miss, you go around the block, simple. But many cars, I wouldn't eliminate parking in front of those houses, because those cars basically are a good defense about, you'd get run over on the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone, anyone on Zoom, Denise? Put your hand up.
Shannon Pelosi.
Shannon?
Hi, Shannon Pelosi, precinct 3. I live at 131 Terrace Ave. My parents live at 83 and 85 Cottage Ave, so I've lived on the hill my whole life. I think Stevie's right, sorry, Director Callow, sorry, Stevie, that, you know, we should just be like thoughtful around, and I've sat on the TSAC committee meetings, and I think that they ran them really, really well, and I think they were trying to be super consistent with their policies and how they apply them. So I just want to give credit, and these discussions have been going on for, I don't know, like a year and a half or something, so it's a shame that people haven't been, feel like they have been notified, but they're all on the town website, so I, I mean, people can access that calendar anytime they want. But, um, but I just, I, the one thing I've been saying, being a hill resident, is that I just think that if we come up with a consistent policy and rules around this, we're just going to have to look at the whole town, because I think that the squeaky wheel gets the grease, you know, and so, you know, and my only fear is that if we do something that is in the best interest of, from a safety perspective, that's fine. Like I told, like I'm a policy person, like adhere, you know, make a policy, adhere to it. I do think, though, that doing a comprehensive review of the entire town, though, is arduous but necessary, because once you start making these decisions, it could have implications that maybe people aren't even thinking about yet. So that would be my only comment. I don't actually have like a, you know, even though I live on the hill, like I don't have a feeling one way or the other in terms of all this, although I appreciate the parking concerns, but I do just think that we really, really as a town have to think about the implications of the Highlands, down the Mays, and wherever. down the Maze, and, and wherever else, because once you start making these rules and, and people lose parking, they're gonna have every right to question where other areas this isn't happening and why other people lose parking, so, um, sorry, thanks, thanks for the, let me, let me speak.
Thank you, Shannon. That's it. Vice President Rogero.
Um, during the subcommittee meeting, there was talk of doing a full hill evaluation. Um, Mike, I don't think T-SAC's met since that subcommittee meeting, but can you just maybe give a little more insight on that while we're all here talking about parking and traffic on the hill?
Absolutely, sir, so, um, I was actually gonna ask to speak about this again anyway, so, T-SAC has submitted a recommendation to the town manager's office, however, the recommendation went out right around the time we were transitioning from the Chief of the Dean interim to, uh, Mr. Marina West, the permanent town manager. Um, T-SAC did make a recommendation to have an, uh, an expert come in and evaluate the entire traffic pattern on the hill because we keep having issues come before us in this area, and one of the reasons we did recommend making this a one-way is because it's a very complex track pattern up there, you have, uh, you know, one-way streets, two-way streets, you have the concerns about how to get down the hills in the snow, um, and we can sit here and look at these things, but we also want to be, be careful that we're not making things worse in one way by trying to make things better in another way, and, and that's kind of how this came up, was the, the two-way versus the one-way with parking. Um, but, you know, again, that's the recommendation, it's sitting with the town manager to, to, you know, ask to have a, uh, I don't know, aside person come in and, and take a hard look at specifically this neighborhood, and, um, as Shannon had mentioned and, uh, and Director Callow mentioned as well, um, we would like to sit down and have a discussion about, about this issue town-wide, and that, uh, that, but it's also the town manager to ask the, uh, council president and the manager to sit down and come in, and we can discuss this and try to help with any problem forward.
Thank you, Mike. Counselor Ayala.
Um, I agree with both Mike and Shannon's view of having a comprehensive, uh, review of the entire hill and, and maybe then do other neighborhoods, but one thing I think we want to make sure of is we also pay attention to pedestrian movements and stop signs, and the third dimension, because there's not enough crosswalks in that area, and if, one area in particular, because I go up and visit friends a lot, when you're coming up Crystal Cove and you're running into park and hillside, there's a lot of tarmac and there's a lot of people moving at higher speed than they should.
Correct.
It feels very unsafe, and it may be that in some areas, we may actually want to think about whether there's opportunities to sort of shrink the pavement, maybe pick up a space or two, maybe make some crosswalks a little shorter in that area, but it, it sometimes, there's some real cowboys that just plow through that place, and, uh, I'm just always surprised at the speeds people travel on these days.
Yeah, and it's like, uh, the guy said, uh, Mike, um, T-SAC there, he said that he drove through the, uh, drove through there for a week. Try sitting there for, you know, a couple hours and see what kind of nonsense there is there.
Yeah.
Between kids flying down the hill to the park on skateboards, bikes, and if you look at that intersection, there's two crosswalks, and it's a six-way, six streets there.
Yeah.
So the two crosswalks mean no sense.
All right, any other questions on this public hearing? All right, seeing that, I will close the public hearing, we will move on, and we will go back to this and old business. The next public hearing we will open is on limiting certain streets, uh, parking limited on certain streets during certain times. And Vice President Rogero, help me if, uh, if I am wrong here, but this is on Veterans Road, you want to go over these?
You, you got it so far, I, I can, I'm.
Veterans Road between eight and six.
Yeah.
Um, Veterans Road on the west side, um, from 50 feet southerly of Cutler to a point 50 feet beyond the southern terminus of Dar's Playground, um, and that's from between eight and six. Veterans Road westbound from a point, um, opposite southerly corner of Cutler to a point 50 feet southerly. Uh, Veterans Road west from a point 10 feet southerly of the crosswalk connecting Dar Playground to the sidewalk adjacent to the property of Fort 13 Shirley Street to a point 10 feet north of the crosswalk. Um, and then eight to five, 30-minute parking?
Yep.
On, on Shirley Street East from Tuxbury to Irwin. Um, eight to five PM, 30-minute parking on Shirley Street East from Perkins to Irwin. Uh, Shirley Street East from Perkins to a point 100 feet southerly. Amendment to read, Shirley Street East from Perkins to Tuxbury. And then, uh, on Shirley Street, eight to five, 30-minute parking westerly from Washington Ave to a point opposite the southerly corner of Tuxbury Street. And then is the, the other one, Shirley? Is it the same one?
The council president, have we had to explain the three of these, um, since they all came up on discussion from T-SAC?
Two, three, four.
One, I think you gave me, yes, and one, you want to read that into the record first?
Right, the last one is changing it from that to 30-minute parking, um, eight to five on Shirley Street from a point 42 feet southerly of Washington Ave to a point opposite the southerly corner of Tuxbury Street. We will open the public hearing, I will ask Mike DeLuise to, um, give us a background on this.
Thank you, sir, so for a while, this went on, this discussion went on for quite a while, which means some other items, um, T-SAC was looking at some of the traffic and parking ordinances on Veterans Road and Shirley Street from Cutler down towards the odd club. Um, I'll use Veterans Road one first, since this is so. This section of Veterans Road, um, highlighted the yellow line here, had an ordinance on the books just stating that parking is limited 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM with no further information on it whatsoever. Um, also, in the middle of this discussion, uh, was also the crosswalk put in here from the, um, locations of Marley's over the playground. So to try to clear out this ordinance language, we looked at it, and the recommendation that came out of T-SAC was to basically from this crosswalk here opposite Cutler to the end of the emergency vehicle access here where the playground starts, to make that no parking. From that point to a point 50 feet past the playground to make it two-hour parking from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, um, except during the park, except during any player's snow emergency. Um, the committee felt that that would allow for the, um, the residents to use that parking at night, still there when people want to use it during a snowstorm because nobody's gonna go to the playground when there's, you know, first snow on the ground. Um, and it allows the turnover for both the increased in businesses that are in that area as well as people wanting to go to the playground. Um, after the original, uh, recommendation went to the council, we had another issue that came up at T-SAC in the stand stretch that was, uh, resulted in a request for amended motion and pulls an ordinance to, um, implement no parking with, basically within 10 feet of the crosswalk that was installed adjacent to the playground, since it is next to a playground, we felt that that was a, 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 a safety buffer. So that was, um, how this all came up, was just trying to clarify an ordinance and clarify some signs that was already, that was already in place as far as there's no parking for the emergency vehicle zone, but the ordinance was in the book. Um, I can explain to you on Shirley Street as well if you'd like, one of them.
Please.
Mr. President, could, could we take it, Veterans Road for us, just, comments on that?
Yep.
And then we can switch to the, I, I'll get confused, so.
All right, so last for comments on the Veterans Road side from the public. Anyone on Zoom, Denise?
Well, she's searching, yeah, obviously the crosswalk there is vital, um, I go down that street often, uh, you cannot see the chi, the children if we don't have buffer zones on that crosswalk. Um, it's, it's certainly an obstructed crosswalk, if you have a SUV truck, um, parked there, if you have small children crossing, it's an accident waiting to happen, so we strongly have strong feelings about that one.
Yep, I agree.
No zone.
Any other, Vice President Rogero?
Just real quick on this, this is an area that has recently, or maybe not so recently, just, uh, it's been developing, and, um, when we're talking about nursery schools and playgrounds and crosswalks and emergency access, that, that's a busy area, so, um, I'll speak on behalf of the subcommittee, we, we thought, you know, taking this recommendation was important.
Thank you. Yes?
Just as a resident.
Just name and precinct again, I'm sorry.
John McGovern, sorry. I've been on that street a few times in the last couple months, and he hit it at the wrong time, and he had one of those little ducklings across, and it's really, it's the watch.
Yeah.
They're not in the goddamn crosswalk. I mean, they have, you know, there's somebody out with the, with, you know, the umbrella, stopping traffic, and everybody will stop. But they're not in the crosswalk. Maybe we should move, I mean, since they opened the building, move the crosswalk or add a crosswalk or something for the kids. I just thought it was odd that there isn't, I just noticed it's a crosswalk.
It was a crosswalk.
And that's not where the kids cross. So go right out the door and right across to the playground because that's where it is.
Thank you.
Education.
Yeah, they should be walking to the crosswalk.
I mean, they should be.
Yes.
Council, there was actually a crosswalk added right about where this bus is, it was right from, uh, the location to the playground, it doesn't show up in the satellite map, but there is a new, new high visibility crosswalk in that location now.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions on this section? Seeing none, moving on.
Before Mike starts on Shirley Street, I just want to, um, this project on Shirley Street began with John Ead, um, certainly pushed T-SAC, uh, to its limits and making sure that we look at all signs that we have in the town, because we come to realize that some of these signs were just thrown up when we had selectmen, and they just said, called the DPW and said, just throw the sign up, and there's no ordinance to it. So a lot of these cor, corrections on Shirley Street are made, we started down by Euro Beach and worked our way out of the point, um, and it's a project that took some time and certainly, uh, you know, Mr. Ead certainly deserves some credit and thanks. Thank you, Mike.
He does, he deserves a lot of credit for a lot of things.
Thank you, Chief.
Mike, if you could move on to Shirley.
Yeah, Shirley Street, so the two on Shirley Street are actually simpler than they seem on paper. Um, as far as the time restrictions down there go, that is something that T-SAC made a recommendation to the manager's office, that we bring somebody in to look at these business districts' time limits throughout the town, because there's some of them that still make sense, some of them don't, and we think we need somebody with a little bit more expertise on those types of things, uh, to weigh on this before we make a decision on, on what that's gonna be going forward. But these two specific guidelines come down to this section of Shirley Street, right in Delby's Corner, um, there is an overlap between the no parking here corner and the, on the books, 30-minute parking. The only thing that T-SAC has recommended is pushing back the start of that 30-minute parking to where the no parking here corner ends. So all we're trying to do is eliminate that overlap in the ordinance that was in oversight when it was, when it was put in. Um, and that's the same situation down here on, uh, between Perkins and Tuxbury, it's simultaneously on the books as the 30-minute parking from, I believe it's eight to five, and there's a no parking zone from Perkins to, um, a point 150 feet southerly. Again, just looking to clean up the ordinance, push the start of that timed parking back to Perkins Street, extend the no parking all the way down here to the corner of Tuxbury because it doesn't account that crosswalk that was put in at some point, and just eliminate the overlap and clean up the ordinances, that's all these two recommendations, it makes me want to just go some of this.
And Mike, can you just go back to the other side of Shirley, uh, by Shirley Hardware down, and just explain that?
So again, yeah, so, again, we, we haven't recommended any changes in the, what's on the books as far as, as timed parking goes, it's still on the books from a 30-minute parking from eight to five. The only recommendations T-SAC has made is, is just the no parking here to corner right at Delby's Corner when you make this right off of Washington Avenue, Shirley. There's an overlap on the books between that no parking zone and the timed parking. All our recommendation does is push the start of the timed parking back past where the no parking zone is, it's just cleaning up the ordinance language so you don't have to do that.
Mike, can you just move over by Shirley Hardware and just explain that, that's consistency to bring it all the way to Irwin, right?
Yes. Um, that's already on the books, sir, that goes down to Irwin, it's, it's already on the books, it's 30-minute parking the entire stretch. We didn't make any recommendations as far as that goes.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any other questions on this Shirley Street part of this? Counselor Ayala.
While we're at it, uh, over in front of Twist and Shake and High Tide is an MBTA stop, and there's clearly the remnants of a yellow painted line which, um, is important to remind people not to park there, and it's so faded that we're seeing people parking there all the time. The bus ends up stopping in the middle of the street, which creates a hazard with turning movements of just regular vehicles, never mind trucks in that area, so if we could also get, uh, that, and there's four or five other locations, but that one in particular to get that painted yellow, uh, that would be a real help.
That's, um, not supposed to be an overlay for the MBTA, they're supposed to drop off and then pull to Shirley Street, um, so we will certainly make that notice, um, to, to Paul Revere who's contracted with the drivers, to make sure that doing that is, uh, the fire department addressed that, I believe, like, two years ago.
Yeah, that's right, but they're still picking up.
Yeah.
Dropping up, so if there is, if it's, it's, it's still a sign, right?
Yeah.
So if people are gonna go to a sign and if it's an active stop and the bus is actually gonna stop, we ought to paint the sign so that people don't park there, paint the curb so people don't park there, take out rid of the confusion and the tightness, because you got a lot of boats coming through there in the summer, as you know, and other stuff, and it's just craziness when everybody's parked up to Sturgis Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything on Zoom, Denise? Okay, we will close that public hearing, we will open up another public hearing granting authority to the DPW to install stop signs, uh, without town council approval. The motion would be that the town council accept the recommendation of the T-SAC by adding the section below to the town ordinances granting authority to the public works director to install stop signs in accordance with established standards without the need of council approval of each sign. Uh, and erection and maintenance of stop signs and signals in accordance with accepted practices, and this is the section it would affect, the public works director or their designee may erect and maintain stop signs where any minor street intersections with one or more through streets where they believe that traffic coming to a complete stop on a minor street before entering the through street is in the best interest of public safety. Such signage shall be installed in accordance with the standards in the manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices 2009 edition and its revisions, as published by the U.S. Department of Transportation or any subsequent revisions of the manual provisions of this section notwithstanding non-conforming stop signs may still be installed where needed, if included in the table in section 10, chapter 20, paragraph 0.020 of this ordinance by a vote of the, with the town council.
Say that again.
Motion that, no. Vice President Rogero, any discussion on this? We will open the public hearing.
Yeah, so during, um, our subcommittee meeting, we sort of discussed, uh, you know, we were in favor of this motion, obviously, um, that's why it's here with the positive recommendation, but, um, pretty much this would streamline our process, I guess, to creating more safety measures in town because instead of, um, the DPW having to put a, a motion forward to the council to put up a stop sign, they can just go by the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and, um, that's published by the U.S. Department of Transportation, and if a stop sign needs to be placed somewhere, they can install a stop sign according to that set of standards. Um, that doesn't mean that we can't request the stop sign be put somewhere, so the council can still put in a request through T-SAC to put a stop sign at whatever intersection, um, that doesn't go away, we can still do that, but this helps streamline the process so that if, um, the DPW or whomever is driving through town and notices that there should be a stop sign here per code, they can just go ahead and do that, and we don't have to talk about it.
Makes sense. Director Callow, do you have anything to add to this?
No, that's essentially it, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's what's written in, in the manual, it's any minor streets entering, you know, ma, major throughways, um, for instance, Putnam Street coming onto Pauline Street, currently there's not a stop sign there. We all know that if you're on Putnam Street, you should be stopping at Pauline Street. Right now, I would have to come, or T-SAC would have to make a recommendation to put a stop sign there because it's not listed, to be enforceable by the, by, by the police, because it's not listed in that table, so this would allow us to, to put them up, you know, as need.
Just consistent with Mass General Law as well, and the driver's education manual that says each car that comes to an intersecting way must come to a stop before entering, um, the street it's intersecting with, so it's also, the manual plus it's backed up by Mass General Law, um, that we would rely on to, uh, for enforcement.
All right, thank you. Any, uh, public input on this? Yes, Mr. Lyons?
John Lyons, uh, precinct two, if I may, Mr.?
Absolutely.
This is what we're talking about at the moment, if you could share.
Sure.
Trying to recycle paper. Trying to recycle paper. And not all former selectmen threw up signs. Let me just share that. And my comments today do not mean to impugn the integrity of Steve Calla. Steve Calla has done a tremendous job in this town, deserves much more credit than he, than he is getting. I would like to take, uh, you on a little journey concerning that stop sign. I, um, on November.
This is at the end of Pleasant Street.
That's at the end of.
And Morton Street.
No, that's at the end of Pleasant Park Road.
Pleasant Park and Morton Street.
And Morton Street. Morton Street is not a major thoroughfare. Let me tell you that right now. On, uh, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, the stop sign was erected, that stop sign was erected. I then emailed the president and the interim town manager concerning the sign, and there was two overarching questions that I wanted to answer. Who authorized the sign and why was it there? What data was used to put the stop sign there? On January third, I requested, uh, some information, and I was denied. I then sent another request, and I was given some information, but again, did not answer the question, who authorized the sign and why was it there? On, um, March fifteenth, I received an email from Mike Deliso, and in his email, I'm quoting, it is my understanding that the signs were installed at all streets that intersect with Morton Street, since these are intersections where vehicles should be stopping anyway. This decision to install the signs was not a matter before TSAC. Only the recommended ordinance change was in front of the committee. I have included the language which Mr. President read. On March fifteenth, again, I met with the interim town manager asking him to remove the sign, since, again, we had no idea who authorized the sign and why was it there? What data was used to put the sign there? I lived in my house at forty-nine Pleasant Park Road since nineteen eighty-seven, and I do not recall an accident at that intersection. The inference of the ordinance is to, is to give the director of VPW, whoever that may be, whether now or in the future, carte blanche to put a stop sign. Well, there should be some checks and balances along the way, since I still to this day do not know who authorized the sign and why was it there. Simple two questions, I still have not answered, got those answered. The inference of the ordinance is that the town council should have authorized the sign. Right? I have not received information that the town council authorized the sign. So my request at some point along the way is to remove the sign. It doesn't belong there, there's been no accidents there, there's been no process, and in the future, this ordinance change, there should be some checks and balances whether this sign or any sign in any part of the town may or may not deserve to be there. And, um, again, this has nothing to do with the integrity of Steve Calla. Steve Calla is all about safety. There's been no accident at that intersection, so there's no need for a stop sign. This is about transparency in data collection. Is the data at that intersection warrant a stop sign? And the answer to that question is undoubtedly no.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone from the council?
I think Mike wants to say something.
Mike?
Yes.
Did we lose you?
Can you unmute Mike?
I got muted again, sorry. Um, so part of this issue came to TSAC, and that's how this ordinance ended up coming out of TSAC. There was an accident, I believe it was at Douglas and Morton, and after that accident, TSAC was asked to look at the new stop sign application. When we looked at it, we got town manager's approval, we looked at, we were going to look at all of the side streets off of Morton Street because the common sense should be committee at that point, I will refer to Steve because he's more of an expert on this than I am, and also the chief, that in that case, those side streets off of Morton would be the Meyer Streets and Morton would be the Through Street. And we were going to look at that. During that discussion, this discussion of, of this ordinance change came up because basically the committee felt it was kind of ridiculous that if you have the manual of, of your traffic control devices, that the stop sign should be there, and you have a master law that says you should be stopping at that intersection, why are we coming to the council every time the stop sign needs to go up? I can't speak to the issue of the sign, that's not my area of expertise, I can only tell you what happened at TSAC, and that's why this came out, uh, came out of the community with this recommendation. Um, there are a number of other places in town that we know these stop signs that, um, aren't currently there, but may not still be there, I haven't revised them in a while. Um, and when TSAC discussed this, the, uh, general consensus among the committee was that we will put this, this motion, uh, recommendation forward. If the council passes it, the matter's over. If the council doesn't pass it, we're going to be coming back with a list of stop signs that we feel need to install.
Thank you, Mike. Vice President Rogero.
I don't really have much more to add on this. This is obviously new information that wasn't presented to us during the subcommittee meeting, but, um, nonetheless, if master law says that a stop sign, that a complete stop needs to happen at an intersection like this one, I'm not sure if that's something that the council could, should, or would want to debate and override, so, um, you know, obviously this is a disappointing situation to hear because, you know, people like to know what's going on in their neighborhood, but, um, yeah.
Councilor Flackhart.
I'm in favor of this kind of thing because as it has come up in the discussion of previous changes, everybody in this town is driving too fast. They've recently put a sign, an additional stop sign up on Grover, and it has definitely slowed the traffic down on Grovers, which is all to the good. So I can't see that it would be a bad thing to have more stop signs requiring people to slow down. This is a small town, it's a residential town, we have a lot of kids and pets, and I'm all for getting more stop signs.
Thank you, Councilor Flackhart. Any other discussion on this item?
If I may.
One more.
This particular stop sign is a natural stop. If you do not stop at that stop sign, you are going into Belle Isle Mosh. So the need for a stop sign there is ridiculous, really. You don't need a stop sign there. If, if I heard correctly, the stop sign should.
There's no debating with the council. So if you have a question or a comment, that would be.
Now, if I heard correctly, that it should be, a stop sign should be at a ma- intersection of two ma- uh, of a major thoroughfare, a small street into a major thoroughfare. One street's not that major thoroughfare. Main Street on the other end is a major thoroughfare. Maybe the stop sign should be moved back there, not on Morton Street.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue? Seeing then, we will close the public hearing. We will open another public hearing on the proposed taxi cab stand at the public landing. There is a motion that the town council accept the recommendations of TSAC to designate a taxi cab stand at the Winter Public Landing in a location at the harbor master, as the harbor master sees fit. This taxi cab stand will be marked by appropriate signage during the boating season. This designation is made under the provisions of section ten, chapter sixteen, paragraph one twenty C of the town ordinances. I will open the public hearing and ask for any comment on this. Mike, do you have anything to add to this?
Sir, I, I did speak to the harbor master today, as a matter of fact, so I do have one piece of information to add. This came into us after a request to the town manager's office for a taxi stand at the public landing. In the past, there had been a temporary sign, um, I don't know if you see this little black mark here in front of this crosshatched area in the parking lot. The thought being that by putting this, this taxi stand there, it says it's not a legitimate parking space, but somebody will be sitting in the taxi cab, we're not taking away any parking, and we're allowing for the, um, taxi cab stand. At some point, the sign about moved over here to one of the permanent spaces, and actually, I've spoken with the harbor master today, he's looking to remove that permanent sign and probably put it back on that, in that, uh, temporary post or in the, um, in the restricted area. Um, it was just the request that the committee felt was worthwhile since, you know, we are, you know, one of the things that people are looking for is a connection between the ferry and other modes of transportation, and having a taxi stand there, especially if it's not going to take away from any parking, was a good idea, it's going to help the public, going to help the taxi company, it's a win for everybody.
Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, so I would just caution, um, with designating it to the harbor master. Um, the duties and responsibilities that have been delegated by the state go to the town of Winthrop, and specifically the town manager for the day-to-day operations of that landing. Again, that space was moved for good cause. Um, I had input in that space being moved over to a permanent spot, and that was because people getting off the ferry should have an available taxi waiting for them to be pulled out. So, um, you know, I, I just caution giving it to a department, a specific department without, that might not have the overall overarching philosophy of where the town's moving to, um, but has a specific concern or worry about their own specific department. And the town manager has that overarching global opinion of where the town should be moving to, um, and he should, you know, he could put down, I don't know, we can consult consultation with the town manager, or town manager consultation with the harbor master, um, but I just think to go to a department head, um, it should really go to the administrative officer who's running the town.
I agree. Any further comments on this? Councilor Yello.
I just want to agree with the chief interim town manager for a day, once again. I think the current location where the chief has put it is a perfect location. I have run into people who have, believe it or not, from Quincy and other places who have taken the, the winter ferry over, and have been delighted to find that there's a taxi there that then gets them around town, uh, to sort of move it away out of the line of sight and with less ability to signage, and also for a phone number about who the taxi company is that they can call, not there. That's a great help where it is. I think it would get lost if you sort of lost the visual, uh, connection to where the taxi is.
Any other public comments? Council, nobody on Zoom? We will close that public hearing. There is another public hearing slated for the investigation of traffic direction between Terrace Cottage and Shirley. My understanding is that is still in committee. Is that accurate?
No, not, this one's coming out of committee.
This one is coming out of committee.
We can hear you read another motion.
So this would be town ordinance, uh, scheduled one-way streets. Motion that the town council accept the recommendation of the TSAC. No?
No, yeah.
Oh, it is, but it just says further discussion. That they're going to conduct further investigation. That the town council request the TSAC conduct further investigation of the traffic direction of Terrace Ave between Cottage Ave and Shirley Ave.
It's just a motion, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't need a public hearing on that.
I'm not sure if we need a hearing on it, but it's just a motion coming out of.
Right.
So other than that, yeah.
That's going to be under new business. Right. Okay, so that does close the public hearing. Now, before we go into public comment, as we had slated before, we're going to back to general information and recommendations, and with us this evening, we have Mark Chapdeline. Now, Mark is, um, he is currently the chairman of the Charter and Ordinance Review Committee. Uh, this was a committee that, um, I had appointed in mid-January, late January, and we had got, I had asked for an opinion from, uh, KP Lar as to whether we were, we would have the ability to do an additional charter review. When we wrote the charter, the reviews were scheduled to be done every five years on years ending in zero or five. Uh, there was a charter community, a charter review committee put together in two thousand twenty, but due to COVID, and then there were other circumstances regarding special elections, and, um, it just ended up not having the time it deserved to come back with a thorough recommendation. So I did ask for us to have the opportunity to have a redo, basically, which we were granted. The committee has met several times. The committee consisted of Mark Chapdeline as the chair, uh, Vice President Rogero as the, uh, vice chair, uh, town council clerk, uh, town clerk Denise Quist, Karen Chavez, Tom Chudina, Kurt Malah, Todd Sacco, Joe Hanlon, and Bob Carroll. Uh, I can't thank those people enough. I know the amount of work that they put in. I was at many of the meetings, and it's, uh, it's a commendation to them on the amount of work they put in and the thoroughness that they went over each item. Um, I, I don't know if it was somewhere between fifteen and twenty meetings, I believe, and, uh, and I remember the first meeting being there, and, and the chair said that all meetings would be from six-thirty to seven-thirty, and I don't remember one of those meetings ending at seven-thirty. But, uh, I do, I can't thank him enough, and I'm, and I'm glad he's able to be here. They have finally come out of deliberations, and they have, um, passed forward to us their recommendations, how this process will go, is we will pass these recommendations on to our Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinance, uh, they will go over them, they will come back to us. Each recommendation will require a two-thirds vote, six votes, six positive votes from the council. It could be amended and altered in any way by the council. Any change, any substantive change, if we were changing language as to what dates we had to provide the budget from the town manager, that's not a substantive change, we could do it with a, uh, two-thirds vote, it would still go to the public for a vote. Any substantive change, if we were, if there's a, a motion in here to change the composition of the, of the, of the town council in any way, shape, or form, that would be a substantive change, it would have to get a two-thirds vote from the council, it would then have to go to the state legislature for a home rule petition, it would then have to come back and still be voted on by the residents. Uh, so that's the process. So we are hoping that we will have plenty of time to go through these, make our recommendations, vote on this, get the ones that we need to get to the state. The other thing that the charter provides is that any ordinance review changes would be voted on at a regular town election, so we would not be able to have a special town election in the spring, we would not be able to do it now. So any of these changes would be voted on in the November two thousand twenty-three town election. And any substantive changes, pretty much, wouldn't take place until, if there were changes involving the composition of the council, wouldn't take place into the November two thousand twenty-five election. Anyway, with that background, thank you again, Mark, and I do see Kurt is here and Joe Hanlon is here from the committee, um, as well as obviously Denise Quist and Vice President Rogero. So I will hand it over to, uh, Mark.
Thank you. First things first, I'd like to thank, uh, town council president for entrusting me as the chair of this committee. Um, I really enjoyed it over twenty weeks. We systematically went through every section of the town charter. Through the public comment and the public forum we had back in April, we identified some other issues in the ordinances that the public wanted addressed. One of those was the treatment of Airbnbs, um, and, and some other, um, ordinances too, and I, if I may, I'll, I'll try to keep it within my three minutes, but I, I'd like to try to go through these. I know them quite well. Proposal one, and, and they're all broken down in this packet here that I've, I've handed out, um, and I'll certainly be available either at the August sixteenth, uh, meeting or, or the following meeting in September, um, if there's any questions, and if anyone wants to discuss any of these with myself or any of the other members of the committee, I am sure that, um, would be available to you. But proposal number one is, is, is big. It, it, it is a big change. Um, it is to change the composition and the term length of the town council. It would be to remove the designation of precinct counselors and have six at-large counselors with a town council president. The problem that the ORC was trying to address was the lack of interest in the number of elections that, that are, the, the precinct council is unopposed. Well, it is an idealistic society to have someone from every neighborhood make up our town council. The reality is, we may not be always getting, um, the most interest in our local government by having precinct designations. Winthrop is very unique. Uh, one neighborhood has the same concerns as another neighborhood in many respects. The airport is a problem no matter where you live. MWA trucks driving through town are going to be a problem wherever you live. We have a lot of similarities in, in what we fight for, and it's to. We have a lot of similarities in what we fight for, and it's to make Winthrop better. So I don't think by having an at-large body like this would be a negative. And the ordinance review committee did grapple with this issue for many, many weeks. And the recommendation that has come forward, that we're putting before you is to, like I say, reduce the size of the town council and to have it all at large and not precinct-based. In addition, we're recommending that the terms be changed from two years for at-large members, rather from four to two, and that the town council president be increased to a four-year term. The cost, the expense, the, the public, that you're putting yourself out there in public for the town council president election, it just seemed to make sense to the ORC that a four-year term would have the impact of allowing a town council president to achieve policy goals and, and again, with more incentive for candidates to run. By shortening the time for the, for the other counselors, the thought process was it's difficult to see what four years in advance is, but in two-year increments, it might be a little bit easier to, of a decision to make, whether it be for reelection or somebody that's coming into politics for the first time. So the abandonment language is proposal two. That's reduced, that's if a counselor does not appear. Currently, it's over a one-year period at 50% of the meetings. We're recommending that that be shortened to a three-month period. These are important seats who I'll hold. You know how much you do at every meeting. Missing more than half meeting over a three-month period is, is something that would grow concern. Proposal three is a selection of the chairperson of policymaking multiple-member bodies. Right now, it's ambiguous. The council rule says one thing, the handbook says another, the charter is silent. What we're suggesting is, is that the individual committees, that the policymaking boards, like the Board of Licensing, the planning board, they elect their own chairpersons every year. Just let's clean it up once and for all and make it straightforward so that there is no longer an ambiguity here, because it just leads to divisiveness usually at the start of a town council presidency. Number four deals with use variances. Now, what a use variance is, and there's a comment within the packet here on page seven, on page 16, but what a use variance does is it allows kind of a broader expansion of a typical variance. So typically, if, if somebody wants to put a deck too close to the law line or, or a parking space in front of their house, they would need to get a variance. And that would be subject to a hardship and demonstration of a hardship for shape, topography, or soil conditions. Winthrop is usually topography or shape. That being said, we also have use variances. We're one of 13 communities in the Commonwealth that provides for use variances. What that means is somebody with a big giant single-family house could potentially petition the ZBA for use variances and have 16 units approved. The butters would, and 300 people around that circle get noticed, but by and large, it may get little fanfare. By eliminating use variances and complying with many of the other towns and cities in the Commonwealth, what that would allow us to do is have a more transparent process. You would, you would go, a developer would come in, that same developer that sees this big beautiful house that they want 16 units in could go to the planning board and say, I want to change the zoning of this property to a high-rise or to a multi, multi-use or apartment complex. And they would give a recommendation. That recommendation, they would take with them over to this board right here. And this council would have an open process where people could call in, see it, and elected officials would make the decision of whether or not this change of use should be allowed and is in the best interest of the neighbors. Because while we all have a right to develop our property the way we want to, we also have a right to protect our property from, from something that's outside of what we bought into. And if somebody thinks that they're living in a residential neighborhood and somebody has a different idea, there should be an opportunity to be heard on that. Number five is addition of recall language. This is a hot-button issue, to say the least. It's a very divisive tool, but it's also a very difficult tool to get, to pass through. Recall language would be to, to give the citizens through their citizens initiative the ability to recall an elected official. They would first be required to come up with 4% or about 518 votes with an affidavit of stating the reasons why. From there, they, within a short while after, would need to come up with a significant other number of, of signatures, all before an election. They're very difficult to process through, but at the same time, many, many towns have them there for a reason, and there is a discussion with some proposed language there for your consideration. Recall language, although it's technically an ordinance, the charter, the home rule amendment requires that recall language be in the charter. So that is one that would also require an election for. Number eight is formation of a water sewer advisory committee. There was a lot of concern by members of our committee, members of the public regarding water oversight. We were given and considered a proposal to form a committee pursuant to a proposal. We felt it was a large overstep of what we're asked to do, and the details of that committee seemed, seemed more than, than what the ORC should really be doing. So we are going to kick the can to this council here, and you folks can make a decision, but we do recommend that some sort of a water sewer advisory committee be formed, that the citizens and the town council and certain department heads should, should work together to, to help make sure that this process remains transparent. There's two amendments to, one is seven dash A, which is action on the budget, just changes the time that it's due. And seven dash 11 is the capital improvement plan. This is the time in which the town manager would give it to capital improvement plan. Currently, it's 120 days before the budget's due. What we're suggesting is that it be at the same time that the budget is due, so that the town manager will actually know how much he or she has to put into capital improvements rather than speculating 120 days prior to. Number 11 is changes to the Airbnb transient lodging. That is a, there's two areas there. One is, we're recommending that, that this council find ways to enforce the law on the books. There's 10 registered right now in town. There's about 100 on Airbnb. The comment that came from the ORC is that the ordinance has been a failure, and it's been a failure because it's virtually impossible to enforce without stiffer penalties, either manpower or, or something else. The second part, and this could help with the first part, is that this council takes steps to comply with Massachusetts law regarding transient lodging and Airbnbs so that we can be eligible for the tax revenue that comes from it. The taxes that could come from these Airbnb-like establishments or businesses, they could be enough to fund enforcement action and make sure that everyone is registering. The reason for registering is because of safety issues. It's smoke alarms, it's knowing how many people are in a property, knowing who's where. So there is a reason to have it registered. Number 12 deals with the measure to increase compliance with assigned ordinance. What we're recommended here is that on the renewal application that each license holder files with the Board of License every year, that there's simply a line item there for ISD to check off whether or not this license holder is in compliance with the signed ordinance. We have four new beer/wine establishments selling beer, retail beer in town. That leads to greater advertisements. We're going to be a town full of neon lights and cigarette ads in windows. I think this is a way that we could easily enforce it without adding any further taxing on the limited resources the town has. Number 13, and I won't go through all of them because there's about 15 of them in there, there are proposals and recommendations from the Collins Center out of UMass, and they, they deal with individual words and the meanings of words and, and some things that we've seen since '06 when this charter was put into law that makes sense to change. So those have been voted on and also included in this. So I think it took a little bit longer than three minutes, but I tried.
Well, you deserve the extra time. It was a job well done, and we thank you for that. We are going to refer this, I'm going to refer this now to Rules and Ordinance to report back to us no later than October 18th, which is the second meeting in October. Hopefully, we could deal with that. I mean, the goal would be to get the changes we need to get, we recommend, to go to the state, get them to the state so we could get them back in time to vote next November. Again, can't thank you enough, and we will ask you to be a participant in some of the public hearings that we will be having.
Mr. President, if I may, one last thing. When you're reading these proposals, I really ask that you look at it through a lens of, should the public be voting on these? I realize that there are some things on here that counselors may or may not be in favor of or that they may be against, but I ask that when you look at them, make that decision of whether or not to support this, that it's being sent to the voters for a decision. There are four of these proposals, and they are highlighted in the packet, that can simply be made into law when this body votes on it. So if two-thirds of the body, for example, use variances, those could be taken off the books as soon as this body votes, hopefully two-thirds to, in support of this recommendation. So there are areas there that I think would, would benefit from your vote, but there are eight other proposals and recommendations that simply would go, you would be voting simply to send to the Attorney General for a review prior to it being sent to the voters. And I think all of these issues, the voters really should have an opportunity to decide on and debate.
All right. Thank you very much. And I will ask the town clerk that we will have a copy of this up on the website so citizens can take a look at the recommendations from the Ordinance Review Committee. Yes?
Thank you, and thank you, Mark, and thank you to the whole ORC. You guys have done a fantastic job. I just have a procedural question.
Yes.
If one of these, like, for example, recommendation number one really deserved to be two proposals?
We have the ability, as I stated earlier, we have the ability to alter them, amend them, change them in any way we would like.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
John, if you look at, I think it's page three or page, probably one or two, we go, I listed it's page one, we go through each recommendation in the order we voted on and the language that we voted on.
Okay.
So they're.
Oh, I see.
They are broken down into pieces. You could certainly handle it as a, as an amendment, but we did break them down so that various parts of each can be dealt with.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Councilor Yello?
Two procedural questions. First of all, thank you. A lot of really good work in here. Can I make a suggestion? There's so much stuff in here that we think about the meeting on the 18th as perhaps just about this set of topics, because this is a.
We will probably have a special meeting just for this.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll have a public hearing also. At least one, so.
And the other question is, is we're reading through this, just as an example, the use description, and maybe the detail isn't here. Are we confident that that will take care of the problem you're describing?
No, it'll be a step in the right direction.
Okay, so if we have questions like that.
Oh, we're going to have people in front of us who are going to ask the planning board potentially for thoughts and recommendations.
Should we, should we be communicating as individual counselors as we're going through this with anybody to get clarification and?
Well, I think this is now in Rules and Ordinance, and I think Vice President Ruggiero has plenty of time on his hands to add any multiple meetings.
Once a week, he says.
Yeah, no, but I do think we'll be meeting multiple times. This is not going to be a one meeting on any aspect of this, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mark.
And just one last thing. I do want to thank the committee that it was comprised of nine individuals, all different backgrounds, left, right, different walks of life, different employment, and it was really a great group you put together. I give you credit. It brought together a lot of different expertise, and it made the process a lot more enjoyable. And frankly, I think it was very productive.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Another question? Can we get this in a Word document that we could do editing ourselves?
Yes.
That would be great. Thanks.
Thanks again. All right, public comment.
Is there a public restroom?
Yes.
Down the left.
O2.
No, it's just a lot, you said.
Public comment, yes?
So Bill Schreiber, precinct five, also chair of the board of health. Mark, I think great suggestion on terms of having the chairs elected by the policymaking boards, because I think sometimes you have situations where somebody gets appointed, let's say by a mayor, to chair a board, and none of the other members on the board like working with us. So I think it's work together.
That's good. I will say I disagree with you to some degree on having things automatically go to the voters, because these fine folks here have been elected by the people, are very, very much representative of the community, in fact, actually more, more representative than the community that you just were on, because it was a lack of women, most of it, not very, not many young people, no minorities. I saw five of the people live in one precinct, so there wasn't that much diversity. But I know you put a lot of hard work into it, but I trust the councils who are elected by the people to make the decisions on these issues.
Thank you. And I believe what the chairperson was saying was he, he was asking us to vote in the affirmative as nothing will go directly to the voters. It would all have to be voted on by the council. So the council will hear each and every one of these issues. Any other public comment? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Concerning the trees that were taken down on Pleasant Street in front of the Atlantis Arena, I did have a conversation with the town manager last week, and it was very disappointing on his part. There seems to be some confusion about how to get money back from contractors or the people that own the condominium association, et cetera. There was a number thrown around by, I can't say who because they're not here, about a $13,000 payment to make the town whole for those very large trees that were chopped down. The law says it's a criminal complaint. The law says there could be a fine for taking trees down that you're not supposed to take down. The law says that there could be triple damages involved with taking down a tree that, that you don't have permission to take it down. Town manager mentioned that he was going to replace those two mature trees, and they were about 10 to 12 inches in diameter, with trees that looked like the two trees that were put, planted on, on Shirley Street for David and Ramona. And they're about two and a half inch caliber. So in other words, we're losing the investment of trees. Everybody's looking for a shade tree to sit under at this point. Temperatures are reaching 100 on a regular basis. Europe is facing the same problem. It's not getting any better as far as the heat, I don't think. Like I said in the previous meeting, I always, I work on a house, I always set up under a tree. Who doesn't want a big tree to sit under if you're outside suffering in the sun? The whole thing is confusing. I didn't like the answers that the town manager gave, talking a lot about him because he's not here. So I'd like, I'd like to have something written down about how we're going to remedy this problem about missing trees, whether it's $13,200, what type of trees are going to be planted, et cetera. You know, nothing, I'm not getting any answers. I've been asking these same questions since the day the trees came down. You know, who's in charge of the trees at this point? The other thing is, I guess there's an LLC that was formed that got a large amount of money to plant trees. I think it's the Winterblyth Trees, Amgro or something like that. Well, the name Winterblyth is on that LLC. Does that give anybody beside the people who are on that LLC any input that we have? Can we have input? Or can we have what their plan is to spend the X amount of dollars that they got from the foundation? There's no information coming out about Atlantis, Ramona Cooper line of trees that was going to be planted on Shirley Street, in other ways. How much money has the town, given the DPW, to plant trees this year? There used to be a budget for trees, not for fixing trees, not for cutting trees, not for planting trees. Is there a budget for planting trees from the town of Winterbloom? I'm not getting any answers when I ask questions from the town manager. I'd like to get some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comment right now? Anybody on Zoom?
Karen Chavez. Can you unmute, Karen? Karen Chavez, Precinct 2. First of all, I want to go back to the White Tower Hill issues. I'm not trying to minimize the issues with parking and traffic up there, but I think that both Steve Callahan and Mike DeLuiso will tell you. I attend many TSAC meetings, and I have been asking for a town-wide evaluation of what should be one-way and what should not be one-way. I also, prior to the interim, Chief Delante, had asked the town manager's office to hire somebody to do this. I realize that it's going to be costly. I do know that. And you people know, you know, the Finance Commission, I know about money. But I feel as though the whole town needs to be evaluated as far as what should be one-way, where the stop sign should be, and not just one particular neighborhood. And again, please, everybody at the White Tower Hill, I am not minimizing your issues. My second thing is, first of all, I apologize to Mark for not being there tonight. As you know, I am there for most meetings, but it was just too hot, so I'm sorry. We spent 19 weeks. There were nine of us. We came from all walks of life. I believe that between discussion, whether we disagreed or not, we all came to the same conclusion. We want to make the charter better. Please, councilors, look at this, what we have given you tonight. And believe me when I tell you a lot of time and effort went into that. It was not just a casual discussion. It was intense. And we had a couple of times that I think people wanted to wring somebody else's throat. And I say that, really. And I think Mark and everybody else that's there tonight will tell you. You know, please, look at it. Think about it. Think about what our reasoning was. And please, look really, really at it. Mr. Council President, I think you did a great job appointing the people that were on there. We were a great group, and I enjoyed working with every single one of them.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else on Zoom?
Diana Beans?
Diana?
Hi, this is Diana Beans, Precinct 2. I wanted to point out, I've heard some really important consistent themes to make. Every decision you make is not about one neighborhood. It affects us all, and it affects us all down the road. So, this is our investment. This is the investment that we've made in this town for our family, and they have consequences. So, I'm going to start with just quickly my last two points that I had on my list. But we do have a very kind and generous citizens group out watering our trees. Would love to hear from the town about an action plan, what's being done, where the gaps are, any kind of brainstorming we can do about filling that need. And workarounds, maybe we can work with a high school to get volunteers or what have you. But we've got people spending their own dollars from their own water spigots out watering our trees, which is excellent and shows how much we care about our town assets and our public property. But, you know, looking around at other towns, we see water trucks, we see resources. We know we don't have necessarily those because we have a lack of funds. But I think we can put our heads together and maybe come up with some way to figure it out. So, that's one thing. Another thing, Precinct 3. You know, Jack mentioned, you know, the two trees that were illegally cut down in front of the Atlantis Apartments are certainly, our town deserves a full compensation against the wrong doors who cut down the trees. There's a couple of reasons, right? So, we started out in the right direction. We got an assessment. The assessment came out from Certified Arborist of $13,200. Sounds like that was not understood or not appreciated by our town manager potentially, but we do need that money. We needed to plant our trees. We needed to replace those trees. And we needed to send a message that trees are not just decorations. These are public property, and they're our assets. And we were harmed by that act, and that can't happen again. So, we just need an explanation from you all as to what we're doing. What are the penalties? What are the next steps? So, lastly, I know we're tabling the 190 summers up till next week, but I just want to remind everyone, I know there's been a lot of communications, that the ADA is the issue before this council. Not by 21 CMR public buildings and facilities. And sure, that's fear-mongering. So, KPOA's opinion is outstanding, and we're waiting for that. But just to give everyone sort of an orientation about the ADA and what you might...
We could just wrap it up, Diane, because you're well over the three minutes. If we could just try to wrap it up? Thank you.
Sure, sure. So, we just want to, one, focus on the ADA, whether there's a violation, whether we have a member of a protected class that requires protection, and to dispel any kind of conflicts of interest. So, if, you know, there's a Pathfinder report, Pathfinder is a tree removal service, right? So, they're talking about tree, they're talking about power lines, they're talking about the ADA, frankly, and property destruction, not foundation or anything like that, like a crack. But we just want to make sure that we're paying attention to our town experts. We've got four of them, and not going outside to some, a compliance officer and state board. That's all I'll ask. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mike DeLuiso?
Mike?
Good evening. Mike DeLuiso, Precinct 5, speaking as a resident and in no other capacity. I was not planning on speaking on this matter tonight, but since it was just brought up, I feel like I need to at this point. I would like to remind the council that the town manager, last meeting informs you that he spoke to the State Architectural Access Board and was told that what I informed the town 14 months ago was correct. Sorry, yeah, six, 15, maybe, no, 14 months ago at this point, was correct about the ADA. If you call the ADA, the number I provided to every member of this council, they will tell you the same thing. It is due to the extent of the work that was done in 2011. The town has been out of compliance for 11 years. The town has experts that were brought in at town's expense to report to the town about the conditions that exist. Any decision that this council makes that goes against that, they, you know, I'm not a liability expert, but I would assume that the liability could potentially come back on the town at that point. I will get into this further at the next meeting when the second is on the agenda. But I would ask you all to please, we hired the town manager for a reason to look into things like this, comply with the law, and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No one?
All right. Seeing no further public correspondence.
None.
None. Committee reports, Rules and Ordinance and Finance, I believe it was a joint meeting.
Yep. All right, so the Rules and Ordinance and Finance Joint Subcommittee met last night to discuss the solid waste ordinance and all topics relative there, too. We, I think, had a pretty productive meeting. We, with the town manager out of town until next week, we sort of thought of some of the hot topics surrounding solid waste, surrounding solid waste collection and how this is going to be managed and enforced throughout the town. We do have a motion that came out of that Joint Subcommittee that I will read during Old Business. But other than that, we hit on some of the hot topics and created a list of bullet point items to bring to the town manager. Some of those include where the Board of Health jurisdiction lies and their regulation versus where our town ordinance lies. We talked a lot about overflow bags. We actually had a sample of the overflow bags shown to us by the solid waste manager, Wendy Malat Page. And I think that was sort of the gist of it. But again, we have a list of questions that we're going to get to the town manager so that we can have another meeting and hopefully come up with an ordinance that is best for the 20,000 residents and taxpayers in town.
Thank you, Vice President Ruggiero. Finance Committee.
Yeah, so the Finance Committee met just before this meeting, and there was just one thing to, one motion on the agenda, and that was to increase the fee, the town clerk fee of the address books from $15 to $25. Currently, those books cost $23 to make. So, there was a drastic need to increase. That's $23 without any sort of distribution costs or anything else. So, that, we felt that that price increase was warranted, and that did come out with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. And we'll bring that up in Old Business as well. Town Manager Report.
Town Manager is out of town.
Thank you. But we're happy to see you back.
I'm glad to be filling in for him. I am taking dubious notes as it relates to the lives of trees to report back to him as well as the taxi stands that have been mentioned here as well and the painting of the MBTA bus. So, we'll get working on some of this stuff. I'll be talking earlier tonight. He's been in constant communication with us. Glad to report that Pauline Street is paved. That was a massive job with every few details. We are having a little shortage. We have people on vacation. We have people sick in COVID. So, we're doing the best we can. We can't fill every detail. We're taking details and prioritizing Revere Street and Pauline Street. Next tomorrow will be Revere Street and Pleasant Street. The side streets will go out of details until we get full staffing back. So, we're happy to report that one street down, Pleasant Street will go down tomorrow. Hopefully, not a full day. And then we'll start the crosswalks in the center next week. We're hoping that to be a Monday, Tuesday project, waiting for confirmation. Supposed to be Thursday, Friday this week, but Thursday looks like it might rain and the heat. So, the temperatures can't be too hot for this stand concrete to go down. And it certainly can't have any water. So, we're playing with the weathermen, and we're hoping Monday, Tuesday would be the day we can get them down there. And our goal is to keep traffic flowing through the center at all times to not have any impacts on the businesses. So, there will be some impacts. There's no doubt about that. But we're in our final stretch in the center. I'm happy that it was five years, five or six years that I've been with Steve working through that center. So, I'll be very happy to see that finished. Park and Recs had a great day last Friday with police fire and action ambulance with their camp, summer camp participants. They did like a touch of truck, and they had a couple of the fire engines down there, the ambulances and the high-water rescue vehicle from the police department. So, it was very successful. Sean did a great job with that. Other than that, there's, I'm happy to report that there's been no major incidences. I, no one jinxed me yet. And we're hoping to get through the week, and I'll be in constant contact with the manager. So, if anyone needs anything from him, he's reachable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. It's like riding a bike. You just get right back on and start pedaling. School Department Report. There has not been a school committee meeting since our last meeting. We will go to Old Business. On the agenda, we always, we have, we will continue to have Trash Enterprise Fund, Trash Abatement, Trash Enforcement until we complete this. But I do believe there's a motion that is coming out of the Finance and Rules and Ordinance Committee.
Yep.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Thank you. And, sorry, I jumped the gun. The motion reads as follows that the Winterbloom Town Council hereby directs the town manager to allow the properties that receive cease and desist letters from the DPW to remain in the solid waste curbside collection program.
There's a motion coming out of Rules and Ordinance and Finance. It does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you, Vice President Ruggiero. And you will be continuing to meet on this, and there will be further revelations coming out of this over the next couple of months.
Yes, sir. And there's a new revelation every time we talk about it. So, please bear with us.
Thank you. Discussion of public ways is more of a placeholder right now. We're in the process of trying to gather more information on many of the public ways in the town to make sure they're suitable for passage, and we are maintaining them properly. So, we will get back on that. On the TSAC recommendations, which I'm sure everyone is anxiously waiting for, I will go to Rules and Ordinance for motions.
Okay. We'll just take them in the order that we went in. I can read them again? Or, they were already read into the record during public hearing? Do they need to be read again? Okay. I will just paraphrase, and then we can... It doesn't need a second. It came out of committee, but we can discuss...
We'll take them one at a time.
Okay. The first one is the parking prohibition upon the north side of Terrace Ave from the intersection of Habba View to the intersection of Shirley Ave.
There's been, there's a motion made. It does not need a second. It is on the floor for discussion. Consul Belcher.
Thank you. I went up to Terrace Avenue and looked at these spots, and after a discussion with the residents, I think that we may want to look at the proposed ideas about switching the parking to the other side. It's very clear that you can only park on one side. The side with the berm also has a big stone wall. So, the ability of a fire truck to get any closer on that side versus against the sidewalk, I just want to get a little more clarity on that before we move forward.
Consul Munson.
I was hoping that Mr. DeLuiso could explain the procedural process of how to propose something different than what has already been recommended by Rules and Ordinance.
I think if it went to, we're not going to ask Mike right now to chime in, but if we wanted to go with Consul Belcher's recommendation and go back, it would go back to Rules and Ordinance. It's not going to go back to TSAC.
So, then a motion would need to be made based on what we've heard from feedback?
Yep. They would have public, they would have a public meeting, they would get input from the residents, and they would come back with a recommendation.
So the process could be as quick as one or two more town council meetings?
Could be.
Okay.
There's a current motion on the table.
Yes, there is before, as of now. Right. Counselor Ayello.
Just protocol of the next steps, would we react to the proposal on the table and then come back with a council proposal?
We could. It could be a motion to table this motion, and it could come back to us when we take it off the table. It could come back to us in a different form. We would vote, and we would bring the motion back up. We could potentially amend the motion. We could vote the motion down. Any other discussion? Counselor Fusillo.
No, no, I'm all set. I agree with, I was pointing towards you, but no, I agree with Counselor Belcher in terms of this needs to.
So should I make a motion?
So do I hear a motion to table this?
Table implies meaning to.
Just because it's a motion on the floor.
Right. We're going to have.
If the council committee didn't need a second, you can't withdraw it without the committee.
No, you can't withdraw it.
So you got to defeat the motion and then.
And then go back.
Motion to table.
To vote on the initial motion.
Deny. Okay, so.
So you need a motion?
Yeah, so there's a motion on the floor right now. It does not need a second. So the motion as stated is to go along with the recommendations made by TSAC and agreed with by the committee. A yes vote would approve this as written, a no vote, we would defeat it, we would then ask it to go back to rules and to come back with more recommendations on it. So a yes vote is to pass it as written, a no vote is not to. And I will ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Honan?
No.
Counselor Fusillo?
No.
Counselor Munson?
No.
Counselor Belcher?
No.
Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor Flakot?
No.
Counselor Ayello?
No.
Vice President Ruggiero?
No.
President Luteri?
No. Motion is defeated. I will ask for that to go back to Rules and Ordinance for further study. Second motion.
The second motion is the prohibition of parking on Crystal Cove in between Hillside Ave and Park Ave, on the north side of Crystal Cove Ave.
There's a motion coming out of Rules and Ordinance. It does not, it's a positive recommendation. It does not need a second. Is there a discussion on this motion?
Just procedural question, same thing. A no means it gets sent back?
A no means, well, it doesn't necessarily mean to get sent back. A no could mean that's it, unless we want to send it back for further clarification. Vice President Mazzaro.
So just for clarification, this is the motion that prohibits the parking in front of the house on the five-way intersection.
Right.
It's not the one.
The one piece of this.
Correct. Just that one strip in between the house that Mike showed us.
Clarification.
Yes.
That was, was that the one that was already on the books and that wasn't being enforced? Or was that the?
No, it was not already on the books. It's a.
It's that dangerous intersection that.
No, I got you. I got you.
If I might?
Counselor Honan.
Was this the one where the public comment asked that, or preferred a one-way? No?
Mike, I will not ask you to speak on this, but could, is it possible for you to bring that back up to refresh the counselor's memory on where this was?
Yes, sir, just give me one second.
Thank you. So this was in the intersection, which was one house on the right side of the picture, I guess, that has just a.
The house in between Hillside and Park.
At the top of Mass.
Coming up from Shirley, you would be on your left. All right.
Yes, so that is right in the intersection, right in front of the house. All right, any further discussion on this recommendation?
No. One quick point that we made during the subcommittee that wasn't made tonight is that it's kind of, this is an interesting intersection, it's a, yeah, a five-way intersection, and it's at a corner, and currently there's an ordinance on the books that says you can't park within so many feet of a corner to begin with, and this whole.
It's a corner.
Street is a corner here.
The whole thing is a corner.
Right, so.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote on this.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Fusillo?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Belcher?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor Flakot?
Yes.
Counselor Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Vice President Mazzaro.
Okay, the next is the prohibition of parking on Crystal Cove Ave on both sides in between Shirley Street and Hillside Avenue.
Okay, so this is the, where there were three houses that would affect the parking and such. So again, a yes vote would approve what's recommended, a no vote would disapprove it, and then we could send it back if so chosen. Any discussion on this? Counselor Belcher.
Thank you.
It is up on the screen if people.
Sorry. Based on feedback on this, I think that it's worth taking another look at, and I agree with a lot of other comments tonight about looking around town at what streets we need to address as one ways and no parking and things like that, but I think this is somewhere where if we can make it a one-way and it doesn't disturb the flow of traffic on the hill, we should consider that a little harder before we decide.
Right. I don't think anybody's saying, if they're voting no now, I don't think anybody's saying that we don't need to make some kind of change, but I think we're thinking that it could be rethought in the parking almost as a buffer zone and look more towards a one-way. So I think, not making a recommendation, but, so a no vote would defeat this as proposed. Any further discussion? See, Counselor Munson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just think that there seems to be a reoccurring issue, and I would recommend that going forward when there are these type of street and parking kind of advisories, when there's an announcement being made to a butters or people directly affected by it, it might be worth having two postcards sent so that they really do know that this is really going to happen, because this is the type of feedback we're looking for. And I'm sure TSAC is, was, has been dying for this type of, you know, feedback from the people that live there and that are affected by it. So I agree with Counselor Belcher. I think this needs to be reviewed again, so I would probably recommend a no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Honan?
No.
Counselor Fusillo?
No.
Counselor Munson?
No.
Counselor Belcher?
No.
Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor Flakot?
No.
Counselor Ayello?
No.
Vice President Ruggiero?
No.
President Luteri?
No. Vice President Mazzaro.
Okay, the next.
I'm sorry, are you referring it back to?
Yes, I am referring that back to rules.
Thank you.
The next motion is the traffic safety measures around Daw Playground, the Nursery School, and Veterans Road. It's to limit parking on one side of the street where the emergency access vehicle is, and also to take into account the new crosswalk that was installed. I think we're familiar with this one, but Mike, if you're at the ready and you can pop up the map, it can't hurt.
There's a motion on the table, it's coming out with positive recommendation, does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Fusillo?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Aye.
Counselor Belcher?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Aye.
Counselor Flakot?
Yes.
Counselor Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Vice President Mazzaro.
Okay, next is parking limited on certain streets during certain times. This is from, on Shirley Street from Tuxbury to Irwin, and that would be changed from Perkins to Irwin. Again, so this is just updating the ordinance to what is in practice, and it's reducing the overlap of enforcement opportunities.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, coming out with positive recommendation, does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Fusillo?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Belcher?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor Flakot?
Yes.
Counselor Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Vice President Mazzaro.
Okay, the next one is parking on the corner of Washington Ave and Shirley Street. It's that red spot right there that we talked about, and again, it's just eliminating an overlap in the ordinance and enforcement.
There's a motion on the floor, coming out with positive recommendation, does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Munson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify in the motion, is there any verbiage about the actual physical items to prevent parking, such as some of those things that can be?
Flex posts.
What is it called?
Flex.
Thank you, flex posts.
That's not in the ordinance. The ordinance just amends the table that says parking limit on certain streets during certain times. That's an enforcement method, and I think that's something that we could ask the town manager to make, or the interim town manager, police chief, to refer to the town manager to see if that's something that we could do.
It's not worth amending, as I'm guessing.
We're just amending the table that, where this lives in the ordinance is to, yeah.
All right, thank you. Counselor Belcher?
My comment was going to be similar to Counselor Munson's. I think this is a good step in the right direction. This intersection is really dangerous when people park right up to that corner, so making it more enforceable is helpful, but I think we also need to look a little further, and I have reached out to the town manager about flex posts and things like that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Fusillo?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Belcher?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor Flakot?
Yes.
Counselor Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Vice President Mazzaro.
The next one is allowing the Public Works Director, or it does need to put up and maintain stop signs where the manual on uniform traffic control devices requires and allows.
There's a motion on the floor.
Without council approval, that's the.
Coming out with positive recommendation, does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Munson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just feel as though this is an opportunity to streamline government, and it seems like a no-brainer, we're following rules that are statewide. I apologize for you, Mr. Lyons, having to go through the frustrating process that you're under, but I would assume that it was a decision by a group like ours at some point that made that possible. Going forward, it will be the responsibility of the DPW director to just go ahead and put these in place, and I think that it's, at some point, we can debate whether things are worthy of having, but it seems as though this one, according to mass state law, is a no-brainer.
Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Fusillo.
Personally, I don't think the, you know, the stop sign necessarily was at issue in Mr. Lyons' mind. I think it's more of the lack of transparency on why that stop sign was put up, and, you know, the lack of responses. I personally, I think it's a good stop sign, but the lack of transparency in getting that response is what I think is a little bit troubling. Yeah, that's all.
No discussion on the floor, please. Any further discussion on the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Fusillo?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Belcher?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor Flakot?
Yes.
Counselor Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Vice President Mazzaro.
Okay, the motion coming out of committee is that the council accept the recommendation to designate a taxi cab stand at the Winter Public Landing in a location as the harbor master sees fit.
I'll ask for, there's a motion on the floor, does not require a second. I'll ask if there's any amendments to that motion. Amendment, Vice President Mazzaro.
I would like to amend the words harbor master and replace it with the word town manager.
All right, there's an amendment on the floor. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll, Counselor Ayello.
Just a question. So we saw a designated spot that had been recommended by the harbor guy, the harbor master. This would shift it to whatever the town manager thinks is best for the town.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure there's clarification on that.
So we're still discussing the amendment, which Counselor Ayello did. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote on the amendment.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Fusillo?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Belcher?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor Flakot?
Yes.
Counselor Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes.
And last, there's one more. It's a motion coming out of committee that the Winter Town Council request that TSAC conduct further investigation of the traffic direction on Terrace Ave between Cottage Ave and Shirley Ave, looking on whether or not this should be a one-way street. That's what this one is, as requested by the neighbors, and this is just sending it to TSAC.
The motion conflicts with the council president's authority to delegate to the Rules and Ordinances. So he already did that during the prior motions that failed. He sent it back to Rules and Ordinances.
So we are sending it back. It's been sent back.
Okay, so how do we send it to TSAC?
It goes to, basically goes to TSAC. From the council, the town manager, or a member of TSAC gets to put it on the agenda, but I think we can check what legal the town council president's authority to send items to committees, I think would supersede it going back to TSAC, since he already sent it to Rules and Ordinances. Rules and Ordinances can hold a joint committee meeting with TSAC to further explore this as well.
So I just want to make sure this isn't to discuss the parking, this is to discuss the direction of traffic on.
No, that's two, right. Well, I think one's going to.
So the parking one came back to Rules and Ordinance.
Right, correct.
This is coming out of Rules and Ordinance requesting that it goes to TSAC.
I get, I'm not sure if you sent the terrorist station to Rules and Ordinances.
I sent the parking, the parking on.
On Crystal.
On Crystal.
Yeah. Okay, I apologize.
Parking, we're seeing enough out of the corner station.
Well, there's been a few different ones that have gone back, too.
I apologize. Vice President is correct with the motion.
Okay, so, yeah, the parking one came back to Rules and Ordinance.
Right, and this is going to TSAC.
This is going to TSAC.
It can go by vote of the council, to TSAC.
Yeah, I could just send it to TSAC. Yeah, and we would just do it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. Counselor Fusillo?
Yes, so, like I said, we met earlier today, there was one motion on the agenda that was for the fee increase for the address books that, from the town clerk. Let me just pull up the motion and read the exact motion. So the motion says that the town clerk's office may increase the fee cost for the town street listing books from $15 to $25, or take any other action thereto. Like I said, they cost $23 to make, just make them, not including distribution costs. So that came out of committee with a positive recommendation.
It came out of committee with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? And just for everybody to know, these are the books which just came in from 2022, and they list every resident 17 years or older, and it goes by precinct. It's a very handy tool. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Honan?
And just for everybody to know, these are the books which just came in from 2022, and they list every resident seventeen years or older. And it goes by precinct. It's a very handy tool. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council Honin?
Yes.
Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DiMarco? Council Flahcat?
Yes.
Council Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes.
And the last one, we're still waiting to hear back from, still have to have discussions with the superintendent, but this will stay on the agenda and hopefully be a done deal at the next meeting. New business, the town vote to accept the state primary and state election early hours. So there's a motion coming out that the town council vote on the following hours for the state mandated early election dates for the state primary September sixth, 2022, and state election November eighth, 2022, to be in compliance with the election reform law, the Votes Act. Election Advisory Number 2201 changes the election law or takes any other action relative thereto. And these are changing the dates. It's probably easier if I just ask the town council clerk to make a little summation of this.
Surely. It's really just changing that we don't have to do early voting on Sundays. To do that, we have to do six hours during two weekends, which we are doing, and make up the hours during the week, which is being done. So it's just eliminating the Sunday voting dates.
So basically, on the first one, on the September sixth election, early voting would be August twenty-seventh through September second without, the twenty-eighth would be out, and it would be ten to four on the twenty-seventh, ten to three on the twenty-ninth, ten to six on the thirtieth, ten to three on the thirty-first, ten to six on the first, and nine to eleven on the second. And then there'll be roughly a two-week period from October twenty-second to November fourth for the election of November eighth. And again, it would not involve any Sundays. So did somebody want to make that motion?
No.
There's a motion by Council Belcher, seconded by Council Flahcat. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Now, we will go that the town council vote to accept providing police election details. And this is a change in the law, giving the council the authority to propose the details and taking it away from the chief of police. So the text of the motion is that I move that the town council vote the assigning of police details to be in compliance with the election reform law, the Votes Act. Election Advisory Number 2201 changes to election law or take any other action relative thereto. So for the primary, August twenty-seventh through September third, through September second, 2022, the middle school, have we already changed, we've already changed the locations, correct?
Yes, yep.
So the old middle school would have two to three police office details. Golden Drive would have two police officer details. And for the state elections, the old middle school would have two to three police officers, again, and Golden Drive would have two police officers. Any discussion on this motion?
Point of clarification?
Yes.
We're not voting at the senior center anymore.
No.
This was also discussed with the chief?
Yes.
It provides a consistent practice that we've been currently doing with police details. Usually, there's three polling places, now two polling places. So you'll see a slight decrease in detailings.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Who made the motion?
The motion was made by Council Belcher, and it was seconded by Council Ayello. You got a quick, you missed that. All right, new, very quick appointments. I have a few appointments to make town council accept the appointment of Alyssa True, made by Town Council President Luteri to the Cultural Council for a term of three years or take any other action thereto. There's a motion. Did we do this one last week?
Yes, we passed them.
What?
We have to pass the gavel.
No, I know, but did we make this motion last week?
I didn't think Alyssa True.
I don't think we did for the Cultural Council. All right, I'm passing the gavel to Vice President Ruggiero.
Okay. Council President Luteri has made a motion to accept the appointment of Alyssa True to the Cultural Council for a term of three years. Is there a second on the motion? Seconded by Council Flahcat. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Vice President, I would make a motion that the town council accept the reappointment of Mary Kasafi, made by Town Council President Luteri, to the Cultural Council for a term of three years or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion has been made by Council President Luteri. Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Belcher. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Council Vice President, I make a motion that the town council vote to approve the appointment by Council President Luteri of Cynthia Hoff on the council and aging committee for a three-year term to end six thirty twenty-five.
Motion has been made by Council President Luteri. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Fusillo. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Vice President Ruggiero, I make a motion that the town council accept the appointment of Roseanne Masochelli, made by Town Council President Luteri to the memorials committee for a term of three years or take any other action relative thereto.
There is a motion to, by Council President Luteri, to appoint Rose Masochelli to the memorials committee. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Belcher. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
President Ruggiero, town council accept the appointment of VSO Director Phil Ronan, made by Town Council President Luteri to the memorials committee as chair for an indefinite committee term or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion made by Council President Luteri to appoint VSO Officer Phil Ronan to the memorials committee, seconded by Council Munson. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Vice President Ruggiero, I make a motion that the town council accept the appointment of Charles Cubic the second, made by Town Council President Luteri to the Conservation Commission or take any other action relative thereto.
There's a motion to appoint Charles Cubic to the Conservation Commission. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Fusillo. Any discussion?
Just quick discussion. Is there a term on that, Denise?
I'm sorry, this is a three-year term.
Three-year term.
A three-year term. Seconded by Council Fusillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
About Karen Ware.
Still waiting on that. Alexander Reynolds is not. Town council accept the appointment of Alexander Reynolds, made by Town Council President Luteri to the Conservation Committee Commission for a term of three years or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion made to appoint Charles Reynolds to the Conservation Commission, seconded by Council Fusillo. Any discussion? All in favor, please do signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I have for appointments this evening.
Passing the gavel back.
Thank you. Thank you for handling that. Okay. We are back to public comment. Whoever's still up, yes.
John Lyons, President Two. In regard to your decision on the stop signs, what you did was you took away the citizens' voice to have any input on the establishment of stop signs in their neighborhood. Because right now, the sole person to have this decision on a stop sign is the DPW Director. You're taking away the citizens' right to have a voice. That's it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, the Dow.
Jack Dowd, President Three. I have three pictures. The first picture is a great tree on Court Road. It's one of the best trees in the town. So I'm going to show everybody, and I'll have copies available for the next meeting when you get a chance. Anyways, the gentleman that owns the house, the house is not in the picture. He had about a hundred-foot wall in front of his house, and he has this great tree. So he had a dilemma. What he did was, he used chipstone with a cap on the wall. And what he did was, he went up and over the tree roots. What a great idea. There's many remedies for this tree on Somerset, and this could possibly be one. You can fix a problem without taking a tree. Second picture, and I'll just explain this. There's a ruler with a picture. The concrete is lifted approximately one and a quarter inches. So it's not, it's not a big deal. It's probably as disturbing as this gentleman's wall. Down Court Road, I counted roughly twenty-six trees. Half of them had the sidewalks patched. The other half had tree roots upsetting these sidewalks and walls. If we took down every tree that upset a sidewalk or a retaining wall, there wouldn't be many trees on Court Road. Now, that's just one road. One road has twenty-six trees that affect sidewalks. And the most confusing picture, and I know there's been a lot of debate here, back and forth, and I think it's coming down to ADA. I don't know, you know, what the story is with that. I have a picture here of a tree in the residence at one ninety Somerset. Granted, the tree is upsetting the sidewalk. Many trees do. There's no question about it. I hate to put this on mic, but he's been telling the town and everybody that's concerned with this situation that this is a deadly tree, a hazardous tree. He's concerned about his children and his mother and father or in-laws. He mentioned everybody. Here, there's a children's playground set up underneath the tree, and there's two park benches for the adults to sit underneath this tree. So it's a very confusing situation. You know, I'm in the middle of it. I like trees. I don't want, you know, that's about a three foot dug-in with a tree. That's a great tree. If we took down every great tree in this town, we'd be lacking. We really would be. So I'm not sure about the confusion here, but this has been going back and forth. And to me, this is not a hazard. Common sense tells me that it shouldn't be considered a hazard. If I thought a tree was a hazard, I certainly wouldn't be under it. And I don't think anybody else should be under it, hazardous tree. On the next street over, there's a tree, the box falling off, and it hasn't had a leaf on it for three years. I don't know why somebody in the neighborhood doesn't say, let's take down that hazardous tree. There's a lot of confusion here. I hope someone picks the ball by the horns.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Just a quick question.
Yes, just name again, sorry.
Billy Clark, I know you said you wanted the feedback. That's what you like to hear from us. Not saying you didn't send postcards, the postcards weren't sent, but if I had received one, I would look than that. So I would like to be at the next one, if you want to hear more feedback. Is there an alternate way of me knowing? I heard someone on Zoom say maybe website, someone that knows Williams.
Every subcommittee meeting is, has to be posted on the website, so it will be posted. But if you give your contact information to Denise or to Vice President Ruggiero, I'm sure that they will make sure that you're notified of.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Bill Schreit again, Precinct Five. So just a question or comment. I would have asked Mark, but he's not here. On the recommendations from the Chilling View Committee, was there any record of how those votes went? Were they unanimous, or was there?
I think there is in this, which you will be able to read.
There is?
Seven-two.
Great, thank you.
Denise on Zoom?
Yes, we have. Lucy, do you?
Hi, thank you. I'm speaking about the tree at one ninety Somerset. First of all, I'd like to say to the gentleman who just spoke, I believe it was Mr. Dow, how dare we say that I can't enjoy my yard that I pay taxes on with my family because I'm also having a problem with the tree. That's just absolutely ridiculous for you to suggest that I shouldn't be able to use my yard at all because I'm having a problem with the tree. I'm trying to fix my property and fix my yard, which I can't do because of the tree. The reports have said if the tree were to cut, the tree is going to become more unstable. You have copies of those reports if you want them. I'm sure the whole council has copies because I emailed them. So I know you see the reports on the tree. If this tree is causing damage to my property and I have absolutely no way of fixing it, none, unless the tree is removed. It is also an ADA violation because in 2011, the town completely redid the sidewalks in front of our house, not patched like the other trees are. They redid them. They ripped them off entirely. You can actually look on Google Earth and see that because there are photos of it. For you to tell me that I can't use my yard because I have a problem with my tree is absolutely ridiculous. It's now affecting my front stairs of my home, causing them to be unlevel. I have no way of protecting my home from any of this damage. I have no way of mitigating the damage because I can't cut the roots. Because if this was a neighbor's tree, I'd be able to cut the roots of the property line, no problem, and cut the tree over anything that's hanging over my house. But because this is a public shade tree, I'm not allowed to do that. This is a liability for the town. You have been told in two reports that this tree is in danger of uprooting in the next year. If that tree falls on my house, you bet your ass, you bet your ass in filing an insurance claim against the town because you knew about it, you didn't do shit about it.
Okay, well.
So if it is not removed.
Just try to direct your comments to the.
Further down the line.
Thank you, Lucy.
I'm not letting this go.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mike, do you?
Good evening. Mike DeLuise, Precinct Five. Once again, speaking as a resident in the neighborhood of Pasadena. I respect Mr. Dow's research. I'm not going to make this bully about him because that would violate the council rules. What I would like to say is that the difference between the situation I'm looking at and some of the situations that I've pointed out, which are also situations that exist in other areas of the town, and as Tom Mandu stated last meeting when he got his opinion from the state about the issue that I've been bringing up for the last fourteen months, the difference is that in 2011, after a water main project, the entirety of Somerset Avenue, Johnson Avenue, Pleasant Street was completely reconstructed. New street was put in, new sidewalks were put in. Because of that reconstruction, not just the basic repair, that is what triggered the need to bring the area into compliance. The Tom Mandu sat there at the last meeting and stated that the tree should have come down in 2011, didn't. If that tree had come down in 2011, the damage that's been done to my property, causing me to have to spend thousands of dollars repairing the wall around my house, would not have happened. That is the difference. And the sad reality is, and this is based on the case law, it came out of like a federal case that we blew out in San Francisco, where I sent that to the council on previous email, that as these areas are reconstructed, if a complete sidewalk reconstruction were to happen on Court Road right now, my understanding, based on that case law, is that that tree would probably have to go to or they have to find a way to make it ADA compliant at that point. The unfortunate reality is as reconstruction happens around our town, which is going to have to happen as infrastructure degrades, some of these beautiful old trees are going to have to come down. That's why it is so important for the tree committee and other groups to please focus on planting new trees so that these other trees will be insured once some of these old trees are forced to come down because they've all gone the space due to regulations. I'll get into more of the details when this is back on the committee's agenda, but again, I felt obligated to speak because the issue was brought up. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
That's it.
Okay. Public relation, upcoming events. Council Honin? Council Fusillo? Council Munson? Council Belcher?
Masport has released its draft environmental impact report for the Runway nine-two-seven safety area enhancement project. The public comment is open through eight-eight. You can go to Masport's website to see the emails to submit your feedback on that.
Council Ayello?
I just have noted, based on personal privilege, when I was ten years old, which was sixty years ago, I went to my dentist in Maverick Square, Brooklyn Maverick Square, and we really never went anywhere. We were pretty poor. Went to my dentist's office, and I looked up, and sitting right across from me were Satch Sanders, Sam Jones, and Bill Russell. It was just unbelievable. First black people I ever saw in my life, except on TV. But that's how isolated we were back then. Bill Russell, who is known, has a reputation for not really being warm, got up, shook my hand, and we had a ten-minute conversation before I went into the thing. I always thought, and Satch Sanders had the dentist appointments. I always thought, boy, aren't those nice guys. They came all the way by subway from lunch station to the dentist. I never thought about it. But I found out later, they had to travel in groups because of Boston's racial hostility back then. But just a great memory for me to meet a wonderful athlete and civil rights icon. So just wanted to say a big loss for this country.
Council Flahcat?
Nothing.
Vice President Ruggiero. And I will say that we are looking, as always, for people to serve on boards and committees. We currently have openings on TSAC, which has been talked about a lot tonight. Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, Tree Committee, Conservation Committee. So there are opportunities out there. If you're interested, please feel free to contact the council or the council clerk. I would now love to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion made by Council Belcher, seconded by Vice President Ruggiero. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Motion.